All right, we'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we all stand for the salute to the flag?
When I move the flags, I am gonna put it over there. Pledge the flag to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with the Republican justice for all.
Oh, Lord.
Good evening, everybody. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: On January 10th and December 6th, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. Please note, there is a no smoking notice. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. Please also note that in addition to listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call. Ms. Armstead?
Present.
Dr. Burghammer?
Present.
Ms. Carrillo?
Present.
Ms. Centron?
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Here.
Ms. Pino?
Present.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Present.
And Mrs. Ulysses.
Present.
The Board Secretary, which is myself, will be acting as temporary Chair of this organization meeting until such time as a new president is elected. We will now read the election results. The following election was held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, for three members to the Linden Board of Education for a three-year term. Mr. Sam Dela Cruz Jr., and there's a slight error in the order of the votes, received 2,769 votes. Malaysia Thomas received 2,535 votes. And Kimberly Ulysses received 2,670 votes. So let's congratulate them on being elected to the Board of Education. The Business Administrator Board Secretary declares the following persons as duly-elected members of the Linden Board of Education as a result of the election held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. For three-year terms, Sam Dela Cruz Jr., Malaysia Thomas, and Kimberly Ulysses. And now we'll have the administration of the oath of office to the newly-elected board members. We invite Mayor Armstead to come up to give the oath.
Yeah, face the other way. Face the public.
Do you have a mic? Don't they have a mic?
Um, they should. That one's detachable.
Repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Sam Dela Cruz Jr. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Aye?
Aye, Sam Dela Cruz, Samuel Dela Cruz Jr.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications?
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law?
For the office of member of the Board of Education?
For the office of member of Board of Education?
And not dis- I am not disqualified?
And I am not disqualified?
As a voter?
As a voter?
Pursuant to RS?
Pursuant to RS?
Nineteen colon?
Nineteen colon?
Four dash one?
Four dash one?
Am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime?
Am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime?
Listed in NJSA 18A colon 12 dash one?
Listed in NJSA 18A colon 12 dash one?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all of the duties?
Perform all of the duties?
Of the office according to the best of my ability?
Of the office according to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations. Support the Bible bigger than her. Okay, repeat after me. I?
I, Malaysia Thomas?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true allegiance to the same?
Oh, true.
Oh, I'm sorry. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
I?
I, Malaysia Thomas?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications?
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law?
For the office of member of the Board of Education?
For the office of member of the Board of Education?
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19 colon 4 dash 1?
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19 4 dash 1?
Am not disqualified due to a conviction?
Am not disqualified due to a conviction?
Of a crime or offense?
Of a crime or offense?
Listed in NJSA?
Listed in NJSA?
18A colon 12 dash 1?
18A colon 12 dash 1?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all of the duties?
Perform all of the duties?
Of that office?
Of that office?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God.
And last but certainly not least, Kimberly Ulysses. Bring all those little babies out. Take your coats off, boys. Take your coats off. So now I can actually see the Bible bigger than these kids. Repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
We're gonna expand the board. And I've got nine, ten, eleven, to the thirteen of the board. Once again, repeat after me. Aye?
Aye, Kimberly Ulysses.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And this state?
And this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
I?
I, Kimberly Ulysses.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications?
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law?
For the office?
For the office?
Of member of the Board of Education?
Of member of the Board of Education?
I am not disqualified?
I am not disqualified?
As a voter?
As a voter?
Pursuant to?
Pursuant to?
RS 19 colon 4 dash 1?
To RS 19 colon 4 dash 1?
Am not disqualified due to a conviction?
Am not disqualified due to a conviction?
Of a crime?
Of a crime?
Or offense?
Or offense?
Listed in NJSA?
Listed in NJSA?
18A?
18A?
Colon 12 dash 1?
Colon 12 dash 1?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all of the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Of that office?
Of that office?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God.
It's okay, we'll try to be quick with it.
She might as well keep her with her, you think.
All right, we will now take a motion to approve the 2024 Linden Board of Education as listed here. Board members Marlene Burghammer with the term expiring at the end of 2024, Lamari Centron with a term expiring in 2024, Antoinette Pino with a term expiring 2024, Brianna Armstead with a term expiring 2025, Dianaara Rosada Quezada with a term expiring 2025, Saskia Carrillo with a term expiring 2025, and the three newest board members with a term expiring 2026. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Aye.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ulysses?
Yes.
All right. At this time, the Business Administrator Board Secretary entertains nominations for the Office of President of the Linden Board of Education.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Dr. Marlene Burghammer for president. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Dr. Burghammer, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
All right, we will now conduct a roll call for Dr. Burghammer as President of the Board. Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Staying.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ulysses?
Yes.
All right, the Business Administrator Board Secretary declares the election of the new president of the Board and turns the gavel over to Dr. Burghammer to act as presiding officer of the meeting.
I guess I have to come up?
Come on up. Congratulations, brother.
At this moment, we would like to make a motion to nominate a Vice President of the Board?
And nominate Malaysia Thomas for Vice President. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Is anyone else, would like to nominate anyone else? Ms. Malaysia, do you accept the position of Board Vice President?
I do.
Next. Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Ulysses?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Thomas, it's really wonderful to work with you for another year.
It absolutely is, but thank you.
At this moment, I believe the mayor of Linden would like to say a word. We would like to welcome Mayor Derek Armstead to say a word. Ms. Thomas, it's really wonderful to work with you for another year.
It absolutely is, but thank you.
At this moment, I believe the mayor of Linden would like to say a word. We would like to welcome Mayor Derek Armstead to say a word.
Good evening, everyone. First, let me start off by congratulating the re-elected board members, Samuel Dela Cruz and Malaysia Thomas on their reelection. And I'd like to congratulate Kim Ulysses for being elected. As you can see, she clearly has a vested interest in the school. She's got some beautiful children. And not only that, you know, Kim is, she was my next-door neighbor. She tried to get away, and they moved two blocks away. She couldn't get away far enough. And now you're gonna be seeing a lot of me now because you're a board member. So you tried to escape, but you couldn't get away. We got you, okay? Anyway, congratulations to all of you. I want to thank, I want to congratulate Dr. Burghammer on her reappointment as the Board President, and like to congratulate Malaysia Thomas on her reappointment as the Vice President. I just want to say what a joy it is to have a Board of Education that works in unison with the government, the city government. You know, I can't begin to thank you enough. And I always say the most important thing in our, in this city is to make sure that we educate our children properly and that we make sure, we guarantee that people can afford to stay in this town. And I think you have all worked towards that. And by in doing so, I can't begin to tell you how good that makes me look as a mayor. I'm not a good, I'm a decent mayor, a good mayor, but I'm only as good as the people who are supporting me and helping me to achieve a goal that makes Linden as great as it can possibly be. I'm delighted to have worked with you all. I look forward to working with our newly-elected Board Member and the continuance of working with the rest of the Board Members. I'd like to thank our Superintendent, Dr. Perkins. She, I mean, you're a doctor yet?
It's coming.
Did I call that into existence?
It's coming.
Okay, all right. I'd like to congratulate, thank her for all her work. I'd like to thank Paul Oliveira for his work, John Serafilio for his work, and certainly Annabelle Lewis for all her work as Assistant Superintendent. Again, you all do such a great job. And by you doing a good job, it makes the city look good, and if the city looks good, I look good. And I just, I'm just delighted to have you all working alongside my administration. And you did a great thing last year. Last year, balancing the budget, we've kept taxes down, services haven't diminished, and people have been educating this town. And I'm constantly in contact with you guys. You're always trying to better the programs. There's so much talk, every time I run into one of you folks anywhere, you're always talking about some sort of program that the school has, how you can make it better. And you're not just talking about it, you're actually doing it. So again, I feel blessed to have people like yourselves working to keep this city great. So thank you all, God bless you all, and look forward to this 2024 and all the good things that we're gonna do. Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna go to Agenda Item Number Four. Parliamentary Procedures?
Item number four, the parliamentary procedures. To adopt Robert's Rules of Order as the official parliamentary procedure, manual to be used to conduct meetings and appoint the Board Secretary and Board Attorney to act as the parliamentaries. Item number five, Board Policies and Regulations. Motion to adopt the rules and regulations of the Board of Education in the City of Linden by laws, policies and regulations as stated in the Linden School District Policy Manual. Item number six, Adoption of the Official Newspapers to authorize the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger to happen to Linden, and the Union County Local Source to be adopted as the official newspapers to be used for the advertisement of the meeting and legal ads and all other necessary publications. I ask for a second to approve four through six. Second. Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Ulysses?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Order of Business. Item number seven, Motion to Approve the Order of Business for 2024 as follows. Linden Board of Education Order of Business 2024. Call meeting to order, salute to the flag, statement of adequate notice, roll call, approval of minutes, comments from the public, Agenda the Items Only. Reports, Superintendent, Attorney. Standing Committees, Agenda Items requiring a Vote, Education, Personnel, Finance, Buildings, Grounds and Securities, Planning and Policy. Reports of Special Committees, Delegates, Comments from the Public, New and Unfinished Business, Board Member Comments, Adjournment. A motion to approve items.
Before we approve, may I ask a question? Should we include in this, I do not know if we should, but the student, we have a student representative, should they be included in this as well?
Well, typically we'd having, when would you want the report to happen? We can't have it in here. Would you like to have it after the Superintendent's Report or before it?
What do you guys think? Should we have our student advocate to be included in our agenda?
She could be included.
Yes, I think she should.
She can go after the Superintendent's and Attorney's Report.
After, yeah, after.
Also, so then you write in the reports here Superintendent, Attorney, and then we
put her there?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry for interrupting.
Mm-hmm. Worries at all.
So Item, Motion to Approve Number Seven, Including Azori and the Reports Section. Second. Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Ulysses?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to Open Public Meetings Act. Number eight, Motion to Approve the Calendar of Board Meetings as follows. See the dates here. If there are, are there any objections or discussion you would like to have for this calendar?
I do have a question. Because lately, our Thursday meetings are actually getting longer because we're having a lot of presentations. I want to know if we can do the Thursday meeting at 6:00 PM also? When we start at seven, we have presentations. Sometimes we're going late into the night, so I'm trying to bring it back a little earlier if we could start at six.
I think that's a good idea. Another thing that I got comments from people who are online and even people in the audience that says that we really need to start limiting the three minutes of comments because sometimes people come and talk longer. And it's not that we don't want to hear what they have to say, but we really start to, we really need to limit it to the three minutes. So you guys want to vote for the six o'clock or the seven o'clock and limit, and really? Paul, we were talking about limiting the meeting. Is there process, is there something we could do, a timer or something? You know, sometimes they have these timers that go up there, that is a light that goes on and say three minutes, and then at the end of three minutes, it stops. You know, it have those things?
Right.
Could we get something like that to let, what do you guys think?
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Tiff.
Yeah, we can have our technology department look into it.
And we really need to start limiting, limiting it to the three minutes and not we, no, don't have to do the gravel and interrupt them. They see for themselves that when the light is off.
Excuse me, it's over. Until then, what are we going to do?
We'll have to use the timer. But we use-
But we used to do a timer.
But can't we have it by our next board meeting?
We should, yeah.
That's supposed to be a simple fix.
It's supposed to be a simple fix.
Yeah, see if we could get it by our next board meeting. And what about the six o'clock? Do you think we should do the six o'clock?
I think six o'clock is good.
I kind of like the seven, though.
No, I think six o'clock is good. Six o'clock is good.
What do you guys think? You want to vote on the six for board meetings?
Yes.
I don't mind.
Six is good. Six, yes.
So motion for Number Eight to move the regular Thursday meetings to 6:00 PM. And I ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
I'm going to change this.
Okay, so this is just for the six o'clock? Then we'll do the resolution to approve the eight? Are we doing?
We're approving Number Eight, but updating.
We're approving eight as amended to 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yulies?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to Number Nine. It is the list of ethics, so we will, as a Board, read each of these items. Starting with Ms. Armstead for Number Nine, I'll start it off with the title, and you guys will go on from A through J. Pursuant to School Ethics Code NJSA 18A:12-24.1, Code of Ethics of School Board Members, each member swears to affirm the following.
A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
C, I will confine my Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the school, but together with my fellow Board Members to see that they are well-run.
E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promise nor take any private action that may compromise the Board.
F, I refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests and partisan political groups or to use the school for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
G, I will, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, will netlessly injure individuals or the schools. In other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concern with my fellow Board Members, interpret to the staff the aspiration of the community for the schools.
H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, and I will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Motion to Approve? Second.
Take it.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo? Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yulies?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
And Number Ten. Whereas the Linden Board of Education is required pursuant to NJSA 18A:11-12 and NJAC 6A:23A-7 to adopt policy and approve travel expenditures by Board Members using local, state, and federal funds to ensure that travel is educationally necessary and fiscally prudent. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that the training and informational programs sponsored by New Jersey School Boards Association and Union County School Boards Association and set forth below are directly related to and within the scope of the current responsibilities and the Board's professional development plan. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that the participation in the New Jersey School Boards Association and Union County School Boards Association training and informational programs requires school district travel expenditures and that this travel is critical to the instructional needs of the district and or furthers the efficient operation of the district. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that the school district travel expenditures to New Jersey School Boards Association and Union County Boards Association programs are in compliance with the state travel guidelines as established by the Department of Treasury and within the guidelines established by the Federal Office of Management and Budget, OMB, except as superseded by conflicting provision of Title A, Title 18A of the New Jersey statutes. And whereas the Board of Education finds that a mileage reimbursement rate equal to the OMB reimbursement rate of point forty seven, of forty-seven cent per mile is a reasonable rate. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that the participation in New Jersey School Boards Association and Union County School Boards Association training and informational programs are in compliance with the district policy on travel, therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the attendance of the listed member, the listed number of school board members, New Jersey School Boards Association and Union County School Boards Association training and informational programs in the course of attendance, including all registration fees and statutorily authorized travel expenditures provided that such expenditures are within the annual maximum travel expenditure amounts as follows. Brianna Armstead, Marlena Burghammer, Saskia Carrillo, Lamari Centron, Sam Dela Cruz, Internet Pino, Dayanara Rosada Casada, Malaysia Thomas, and Kimberly Yulies. I ask for a motion to approve Item Number Ten.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yulies?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to the Education Report. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendents, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval for Items One through, one through eight. I respectfully ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
I would like to recuse myself from Agenda Item Number One and Agenda Item Number Four dash one, yes to all other agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Yulies?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to Buildings, Grounds, Security Report. The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of School Boards and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item Number One, Use of Facilities at No Charge as requested by a Kushner Sports Supervisor at Linden Department of Parks and Recreation. I respectfully ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
I would like to abstain myself from Items One.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Yulies?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Before moving on to the next item, I just want to point out on the Education Report, Item Number Seven, we will proclaim the month of January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month to be highlighted in the Linden Public Schools as outlined in the following solution below, as well as Item Number Eight, proclaim the month of January 2024 as Muslim Heritage Month to be highlighted in the Linden Public Schools as outlined in the following resolution. At this moment, we will move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes. If you are approaching a podium, please list your name and address, and if you're online, please say your name and address as well.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Rivas. I reside at 1415 Hassel Street in Linden. I am also, as per the support of the people, one of your councilmen in the City of Linden, and together with Mayor Armstead, will continue to say thank you to this Board of Education to be working together with city officials. For the second year in a row, the City Council has appointed me as the Board of Education liaison with the City Council, and I will be honored to work with you together on anything that this Board will need. My commitment is to work together with you in everything that is for the benefit of our childrens and for the benefit of our city. I would like to congratulate our Board Members that were re-elected, Sam Dela Cruz, Malaysia Thomas, and I would like to welcome Kimberly Yulies to the Board of Education. You are truly heroes. Your job is not easy. I had the opportunity to experience it, and I know how difficult it is to be in your chairs and trying to provide solutions to anything or everything that people may come into this microphone and ask. From the bottom of my heart, I'd like to keep thanking you for the good work that you did last year. Please continue at the good, the good work together, as our Mayor said, and united. We're going to continue to keep Linden moving forward. So thank you, congratulations, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to come up and make a comment?
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LEA, President, LHS Social Studies Teacher. First, a note of congratulations to our newly sworn-in Board Members, Vice President Thomas, Mr. Dela Cruz, welcome back. Ms. Yulies, welcome. I have no doubt that your time on the Board of Education will be eventful, productive, and always, always interesting. Please do not lose sight of the reality that the decisions that you make will directly impact our students and staff. Please treat these decisions with the thought and care that they deserve. The students and staff of Linden deserve nothing less. A moment ago, Mr. Rivas noted that the work that you all do is hard. And it is. Making these decisions weighs heavy. I have no doubt about it, and I wouldn't be doing a good, I wouldn't be a good advocate for my membership if I didn't. No, I didn't. Did I break it? Thank you, guys. I wouldn't be a good advocate for my members if I didn't remind everybody that the work that goes on in our schools is incredibly difficult. From the moment lights are flipped on in the morning until that moment the last staff member goes home well into the night, the energy in our buildings, the energy of all of our staff is dedicated towards bringing, is dedicated towards educating our students. The energy the staff brings each day is boundless and limitless and is always, always directed towards helping our kids, helping our city. I'm sure that the decisions the Board makes will be made with the same care for our students and staff that we bring each day. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome back. Just want to say congratulations to Mr. Dela Cruz, Ms. Thomas, and welcome, Ms. Yulies. Thank you. I just want to say, last week, last month, I believe you were here for the meeting. It ran a little late. Meetings, you know, will run late. I hope you're up for that. You've seen our students come and talk. They have been listening. So I, you know, please take that into consideration when you're, you know, everything's getting voted on. Just want to say about Pomtonian, I did, they had a meeting with some of the students, and I sat in on that. They're going to try and bring things into the school, like doing some kind of a brunch, trying to get more students to come for breakfast. They asked the students what they like, what they don't like. So there was going to be some changes. So I know there was some issue, you know, some, somebody said something about the pizzas, you know, we're smaller. I know, I think Fridays, they do have pizza coming in from a local pizzeria. But I did bring that up to them. So, you know, if anybody does have any questions, Ms. Marcia there, she said, you know, you can give her a call, or, you know, she'll be happy to come and, you know, go over. Like I said, I know they do have to follow state guidelines. So, you know, with the portions and everything, but they do try and give bigger portions to, you know, high school students. But again, welcome back and see you later on in the month. Thank you.
Are there, is there anyone online? Okay, at this time, we-
Yeah, I apologize. I think the, it cut off the next part would be the new and unfinished business.
Okay. Is there any new and unfinished business that you all would like to discuss, bring back to the table for 2024? I would like to speak on the high school graduation. We were, as of last year, looking into a location outside of the stadium. Have we looked into that?
I know I, I know we were looking into Keene University at one time to do the graduation. I do not know if that is even at all possible for us to use Keene University. There is this place that I do not know if we could get it, if you guys know about it. It's a church in Seaville called Faith Fellowship. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. It could hold almost a thousand people. Would you say that? It's, and it have parking. It's a beautiful place. No, that is just one thing that we could also look at. Some of those churches are awesome.
I just know that some of the facilities may have already been booked for the year, so I just want to make sure that we remain on top of it so that we won't have to run into any issues.
This is in case there's a weather, correct? Or?
Yeah, issue similar to last year's graduation.
Because of the weather, last year, that was, well, killed us. Because when our stadium, we're fine if it's no weather.
You know, but it look at winter, you know, because of global warming, nobody could no longer predict the weather. So we have to basically look at an option of bringing the graduation indoors because of that.
If we could check, I know the, the- We could check, I know the, the high school principal did inquire about Keene, so we can find out what he had found out about it.
I know we all want a different place, something nice, but we need to look at convenience as well as everybody traveling back and forth, you know, because they've been doing this for so long and getting back and forth without an issue, so we need to take that into consideration as well. Keene is beautiful and all, but, you know, we have to keep in mind, how is everyone going to get there and things of that nature. It's been, we've been talking about it for a long time, so let's keep talking about it, see if we could come up, we bump our heads and see what's going on, because convenience is most important. And, you know, yes, we want the kids to be comfortable as well, but convenience is very important.
Good evening, everyone. The high school does have a graduation committee, and they have been doing research on facilities. We will have an update at our next meeting, but I do know that Keene University is unavailable for graduation. They do not support, well, I shouldn't say support, but at this time, high school graduations are not taking place at Keene University.
What I, what, one of my concerns right now is, is scholarships for students. How aggressive have our students been really getting with their guidance counselors? Are they enrolling in schools? Last year, we got over $3 million in scholarships. This year, I would expect that amount of money to double when it comes to scholarship for students, so I just want us to get really, really focused on graduating our students and helping them pay for college. This is what I think should be, especially for seniors, is to do whatever we can to help them at this time. Do we have any, besides our regular, I know that, we spoke about this once before, and I know statistics says, is that there's like 400 or 350 students to one guidance counselor, and the guidance counselor do a lot more than just helps students. What other, what other programs or initiatives we have in place right now to make sure that every one of our student have, meet with a guidance counselor, go over courses, go over training, go over scholarships, because this is one of the things we need to really be doing at this moment.
Yes, to your first question, Dr. Berghammer, our high school counselors are aggressively working with our seniors in terms of exploring the various postgraduate options that are available to them, whether that's pursuing college, employment, trade school, or entering the military. Our high school counseling department has actually had several instant decision days where colleges come into Linden High School and interview students, review their transcripts, review their grades, and offer onsite admittance. And in many of those instances, our students have been awarded scholarships, and in some cases, full rides. We had an instant decision day with Keene University. We had an instant decision day with Lincoln University, as well as several other universities. Our high school counselors have also gone on several field trips with students, as well as college fairs. They went to a recent HBCU college fair. They went to a Hispanic college fair. So, they're working very closely with the senior class. They go into the classrooms, they conduct class lessons as well, and work with the students on the various options available to them.
That's, that is very, very good news. Thank you very much.
And in terms of the scholarships, they're also in the midst of planning our scholarship night, which will be held in June, and that, there, they focus on all of the local scholarships where students are awarded hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, they're working with students and making sure that they're starting to submit their applications. Typically, applications are due in mid-spring, so they're starting that now, actually.
So, with the scholarships, when do students actually start applying for scholarships? Do they start in ninth grade or when do they actually start? Because there is a saying, the earlier the young people start applying for scholarships, is the more scholarships they get. For example, if in the ninth grade, a parent apply for scholarship for their children, let's assume they send out 25 scholarship, scholarship application for their children, about five companies will respond. The five companies will tell the children that they are too young for college, but they will give them all the instructions that they need. In a lot of the prep schools, the kids start applying for scholarships in elementary school. So, once they start applying for scholarships in elementary school, what happened, by the time they reach to high school, they already have almost over $100,000 in, in potential scholarships, because they start very early. And not only that, they also have, to get scholarships is not just applying. Some, some scholarship need, needs requirements. There's certain things that need to be done in order to get that scholarship. I think we need to have, I do not know if we do it, and we may, may have it already, but I think we need to have a scholarship committee. People just focusing on helping our students get scholarship for college, and it should start from elementary up. What do you guys, what are your thoughts on that?
I do think that having a scholarship committee would be helpful. Any way to cut costs from college and university expenses will be well needed.
I think it's a great idea to help our kids in that way to promote, for them to, like, to awake that, that willingness to go to college. I think that's a great way to, to start with them.
Any thoughts?
Yes, I agree with what everyone said, that a scholarship committee could be beneficial to our students. I'd like to also add other additional things that we're doing as a district. First is that every school principal has to create four school goals, and one of the high school goals is on student, 12th grade students increasing their exposure to college and career readiness. So, that does tie into increasing awareness, because it's not only a goal, but it's also a need, and so that was established at the beginning of the school year. We also have online programming, such as College Board, which provides students scholarship access, and that does allow for students outside of 12th grade, multiple grades, to look for scholarships, so they are there and available for students to apply. We also receive broadcasts from the Department of Education, and then I do, and it comes through my office, and I share that out with the counselors, and then that gets shared out to all of the students on their email accounts. So, I just wanted to provide that information and additional things we're doing.
One of the reasons why I think a scholarship committee is important is that, especially at an early age for students, is that when the students start talking to this, the counselors or the committee members, and they start really investigating scholarships, they get to understand how people actually qualify for scholarships. They become more careful on what they post on the internet, because they know certain stuff they post on the internet could exclude them from certain scholarships. All right? You know, we are living in a world right now where ignorance is no longer an excuse. So, what we have to do is we have to eliminate the ignorance of our students from a very early age by making our students become more responsible on, on, on the decisions they make, because if they want to get scholarships to go to, but there's, there's millions of millions of unused scholarships out there that we need to, from an early age, start tapping our students into it and making them become more socially, social media, socially responsible, so they do not destroy their chances of getting the type of scholarships they need to go to certain institutions.
Dr. Berghammer, if I may add one additional thing that we're doing, we actually have a meeting coming up this week where we are going to be planning a district-wide college and career readiness day, so that we're starting conversations regarding college and career readiness, starting with our elementary school students, where it's not just a focus on high school. So, that meeting is actually coming up next week, because our goal is to ensure that every single one of our seniors graduate being able to answer one of the three Es, where they're either going to be employed, enlisted, or enrolled.
Are we getting the parents involved? Because sometimes you might think, we might be telling our kids in school this, but some of the parents don't know, okay? And it all begins in the household, because sometimes there are households that might bring the student down, okay? So, I think we got to educate our parents also, let them know that there is help out there for their child to continue higher education.
That's good. That is, is happening, and we, well, we, we send it in multiple ways. We post on our social media sites. We also email our parents as well, and we'll put it on the website. And I'll bring it back to, as I stated previously, the great thing on our website is that it allows for translation, and so we, we take pride in being able to reach out to more of our diverse population here in Linden by having it on a website that translates into multiple languages.
Thank you. Is there any other?
Yes, hi. In November, myself and board member Brianna Armstead attended a nonprofit organization annual event at Elizabeth High School, and in the cafeteria, they had college and university banners hanging in the cafeteria, and I thought it was very inspirational, and I know that recently that the lunchroom was painted from gray, from the gloomy gray that it was before. So, I was just trying to inspire the students, and I was hoping to see if maybe we could have the banners hanging and inspire them to just be enlisted, like you said, or enrolled in, in college and the university, since we're on the subject.
And what about, like, for example, last year, we had students who got full scholarships to Princeton and over 100,000, 150, is there, I do not know if this is a violation, is there any way we could start posting these students' pictures up and say, this student got 100,000, a full scholarship to Princeton or whatever? I do not know if it's possible or if it can be done, but I think that sometimes people never believe it could happen to them. But if you're showing them, hey, this is somebody that is in our school district that got a full scholarship to Princeton, and we start, again, I do not know if it's possible, but I think we need to have the, the scholarship mindset for our students, and it needs to start at a very early age. What are your thoughts on that, Mrs. Perkins?
I will look into how we can showcase students. I, I continue to bring it back to it's all about exposure, and that's what I'm hearing. And I want to just piggyback on what you said, Ms. Centron, that yes, we do have those banners in the high school right now, so we have college banners, we have mascots and all of that, and exposing students. Back in November for American Education Week, a lot of the schools throughout the district, they spent a day where it was college awareness, and the faculty and staff wore their college replica to, you know, expose students to that. And when we saw that on the executive leadership team, we said, no, we want to make sure that we do it a district-wide day, and that ties to, as Dr. Berghammer stated, is exposing students early, that there is a path out there for higher education, then to allow them to understand that there is the financial support that can be available to them through scholarships. It's definitely a vision that we are moving forward in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great point, Ms. Centron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board regarding new and unfinished business?
What about the videos that you got going on?
Videos?
Videos, yes, that you're supposed to have with the children, the high school students on making videos and content.
Competition.
Yes, the deadline is coming up in the next two weeks or so, so we'll be able to then review the videos and work on select recipients.
Kids is jumping in.
Was it marketed properly? Was it-
The students, I'm assuming, yes.
Did you guys get a lot of videos already?
The video to-
Go ahead.
I, I don't, I think it's moving too fast. You know, it's like-
I understand, but-
What do you think?
Let's see how far it goes. Let's see what they have, and is a lot of kids participating or no?
We can provide you that information. When this initiative was pushed forth through the board for board approval, it stated that it would take place in the month of January. If you believe that we should move it to another month, we will have that data for you. So, we did publicize in multiple ways. We shared it with the school community, parents and students. We put it on our website. Technology teachers went in and spoke to all of the students as well on the importance of, you know, hearing their voice. You know, this video is to promote violence and awareness, and so we will continue to, to push forward, but I will get to you, Dr. Berghammer, to share with the board the exact, the status of where we are. We currently have it planned for the winners to submit their videos to their technology teachers, and then the videos will be sent to the city of Linden, because it's the mayor's office who will be judging on those videos, and then the winners will be invited to the January 20, tentatively it's set for the winners to be invited to the January 25th meeting.
If the stats are low, we could possibly extend the deadline, and to be fair to those who have submitted, if there are any edits or revisions or anything additions that they'd like to make to their videos, I think we should allow that, but I guess, depending on the stats, that's my opinion.
We'll have that for you tomorrow.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on new and unfinished business? Well, at this time, we're going to move to board member comments if there are, if there are any comments that any board member would like to make, you may do so at this time. Anyone?
Okay, I guess I'll go.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. It's nice to see everyone, and congratulations, Sam, Malaysia, and Ms. Ulysses, congratulations, and put your roller skates on, because it's on and running, babe, okay? It's on and running, and welcome to everyone. It's nice to see everyone, and this year, we're going to take it like we took it before, but this time, it's not going to be smooth sailing, but then again, it will be, because we all know what we're doing, and we have each other's back. And parents and teachers, thank you very much for everything. This is a new year. Let's make it a new year, and thank you, and have a happy day, and congratulations to each and every one. Sam, I know you're the only man here, but it's okay. All right? It's okay. All right?
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, and first, Happy New Year. I hope you guys had a beautiful holiday season. I guess you did, because you're here with us again, and we're coming back for 2024. I want to congratulate Malaysia once again, and Ms. Kim, looking forward to working with you. And thank you, guys, for having faith in me to get re-elected and be part of the board again. I take this with pride, and I do have kids in the system that I look out for the best of my kids and the best of everybody's kids, so all the kids in Linden, I look out for, not only mine. And I thank you for giving me the faith to move on forward, and we're going to keep on moving forward. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
I just want to say congratulations to Sam Dela Cruz and Malaysia Thomas on their new, well, being re-elected, and then a big congratulations to Ms. Kim Ulysses. We're so happy to have you, really looking forward to working with you. Your family is beautiful, and I know that we're going to have a great time working together on this board. Happy New Year, everyone, and then also congratulations to Dr. Berghammer on her appointment as president, and to Malaysia Thomas as her, on her appointment as vice president. And also, just a special shout out to our board secretary, Donna. Thank you for always showing up during this holiday season. We really love you so much, and we're so happy to have you.
I'll go ahead. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. It's always a pleasure to see a full room here. Thank you all, and all who are out in the community, who took the time to vote me back into office. This is a pleasure. This is a pleasure. This is a job not for the faint of heart. It is a pleasure serving the Linden School District. And I just want to welcome Kim Ulysses to the board. It could be a little intimidating at first to come up here and speak in front of everybody and get the hang of it, but you will, and you'll jump in and you'll be just fine. So we welcome you with open arms. Sam, congratulations to the both of us. And thank you, board, for putting me back in this chair. I truly appreciate it. Thank you all, and have a good evening. It's on you.
Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to be the board president again. I was driving, as I was driving in tonight, I remembered what it was like when I first joined this board and how stressful many nights were. And I would come to the meetings and I would sit in my car and I would say, Lord, this is hard. Could I continue doing it? Being a board member or a board president is a, it's a major, major responsibility. Sometimes you make decisions that people like. Sometimes you make decisions that some people don't support. But most of us, everyone who sits on this board, I could tell you, I speak with each one of them, and every one of them 100% care about the students. They care about the faculty and staff, and they also care about the community. When I look at Ms. Pino, she always say, students come first. She always say, students come first. When I listen to Ms. Dianara, she says the same thing. When I listen to Ms. Brianna, she loves her cheerleaders, but she really, really loved the students. I look at, I'm Sasia. And Sasia, when she, when I listen to her and Brianna, and I look at these two young people who were graduates of Linden High School that are sitting here trying to make a difference, it is amazing. Then I look at Malaysia, quiet but strong. And I love, love working with her. And I thank every one of you who supported me for board president. Now, we have a new year coming on, and again, it is still all about the students. To me, it's all about improving test scores. It's all about making sure students get scholarships to go to college. It's all about making sure our faculty and staff is happy because together we are stronger. It's all about the safety of our students. It's about the safety of our community. It's about hearing. It's about advocacy, hearing the voices of our students and letting students know that we are listening. We have come a long way in the last 12 months, but we have so much more to do. The work never ends, but if we do it together, if we do it together, our students will be rewarded. Remember, we are not here to lead, but we are here to serve. We are your servants, here to serve you, to listen to you and make decisions that we all believe is in the best interest of the people of Linden. I also want to thank my superintendent. She's doing an awesome job and her, her assistant superintendents. And of course, John, I think all of you guys are doing a wonderful, wonderful job. And I look forward, I truly, truly look forward to spending another year with you guys because I am confident that we have a lot of work to do, and we will do it together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'll take the time to thank all the residents of Linden who elected me here, to be here because it's because of you that I'm sitting here today. And because I'm here, my parents, who are sitting in the audience, are very proud. And I'm so proud that my children are able to see this as well. My friends, family, everyone, thank you for the support. I'm also excited to be elected because now I'm here with the board members. And I am so excited to work with you guys to make Linden great, as it already is. You guys are doing such a great job, and I am so happy to be here with you guys. So once again, thank you to the city of Linden. Thank you to our superintendent, the board members, and also Mr. Mayor Armstead. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I now ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo? Ms. Intron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quisada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
I do want to say, Kimberly Ulyssy, Sasia Carrillo. Those are the names that we have mispronounced, and I want to make sure that that is addressed.